We'll call our December 17th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry. Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Walmet.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Paul Ramsey, Jr. of Church on the Hill, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you that this is the day the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, I just thank you today for our city. Just ask you, Lord, to just continue to bless this city, the citizens, all those that are a part of this place. Lord, I thank you for our city council, and we just ask you right now, Lord, for wisdom in the decisions that they make. Lord, I pray for favor and for timing with how they operate over this city. And, Lord, I just ask you to bless them and their families at this holiday season. But we most of all thank you for your Son, Jesus, and the price that you paid for us. Bless this city, in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or deletions?
Mayor, we have one change. We would ask that you consider adding item seven J., which is Consider Resolution R-151218, authorizing the acceptance of the Heart of the City Playground. And that's the only change.
Very good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item four, consider, four A., consider appointment of the Sewer Regulations Appeals Board. Mr. Kelly.
Mayor and council, seeking council approval to appoint two members to the Sewer Regulations Appeal Board.
Do you have my side? No. Oh, no, there's supposed to be a...
Well, go ahead. Board was established in 1998. It's made up of five members. It's appointed to three-year terms. And the board is conduct hearings and appeals of the decisions of the director and take actions pursuant to the sewer use ordinance. Current board members Phil Staten and Gina Whitehead's terms will expire December 31st. They've both served two terms and are not eligible for reappointment. Paul Morgan, the Manufacturing Engineering Manager with Identity Group, and Dave Almond, Civil Engineer that owns Almond Engineering, have both agreed to serve on the board for a three-year term. And that would be my recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Four B., consider appointments to the Industrial Development Board. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, we've had two resignations from the Industrial Development Board. We had two gentlemen, Bob Allen and Bob Duncan, resign from the board. They were great assets to the board but felt like they needed to resign for other opportunities. So we would ask that, the IDB has asked that you would consider appointing Jim Shipley and Cheryl Sandlin to serve in those unexpired terms for those gentlemen. And I think it's a great choice, a great recommendation that's coming from the IDB. And I would ask you to consider those two names to serve on the IDB.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion?
I just think it's good we got some people of that quality stepping up and volunteering. Very good.
All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item five A., consider approval of minutes of council being held on December 3rd, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Five B., consider on second and final reading, Ordinance O-151029, rezoning property located at the northeast intersection of Bennett and Lee Seminary Roads from RS-20 Single Family Residential to CI Commercial/Industrial Mixed Use. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the location of the property being considered on second reading. Here's the current zoning. As you know, the Planning Commission recommended for approval of the rezoning. The planning department concurred with this recommendation. We've had no calls or comments since first reading.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
And five C., consider on second and final reading, Ordinance O-151234, amending the Budget of the Quality of Life Fund for the City of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016. Ms. Emmerich.
Mayor and council members, this amendment increases the appropriation for expenditures in the Quality of Life Fund by $65,000. The expenditure is for the water slide purchase. We've had no comments or changes on the ordinance since first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item seven, seven A., hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance O-151131, rezoning a portion of map 6431.O2 from RS-20 Single Family Residential to CI Commercial/Industrial Mixed Use. The property owner, Linda Owens, has appealed the decision to the city council. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, this is the general location, more detailed map of the location of the property. As you stated, this has been requested by Linda Owens on behalf of the Norma Fay Piles Lynch Family Purpose LLC. And the property is located on Minelet Creek Road. This request was considered by the Planning Commission at our October 2015 meeting, and it was unanimously recommended that the rezoning be denied. The property for Ms. Owens, this requested rezoning, is identified as parcel 3102 on tax map 64. And you can see, it's adjacent to the east of the Park West subdivision. The parcel consists of approximately six acres in total, and the portion proposed for rezoning consists of approximately three acres. There's an aerial view, and I'll come back to any of these if necessary. Here's the actual zoning. So this is the actual entire track in here, and this is the portion that's being appealed to the council. The current zoning, as you can see on this property, is split, and we have CI on the western portion and RS-20 on the eastern portion. It's contiguous with CI zoning to the west, with CI and RS-20 zoning to the north and south, and with property zoned as RS-20 to the east. The portion of this property that is RS-20 is approximately 200 feet wide, and as I stated, it's contiguous with the Park West subdivision. This area was created when the original zoning was approved in 2003 to provide a buffer for the large single-family residential development in the adjacent subdivision. This 200-foot-wide buffer also extends onto parcels located north and south of the subject property. This property, along with two other parcels, was deeded by the City of Cookeville and Putnam County to Ms. Owens in 2010 as a part of a settlement agreement stemming from the acquisition of property by the city and the county for the development of the Highlands' Business Park. The area in which the parcel is located was annexed by the city in 2002, and as I stated, the zoning was established in 2003. Our future land use concept plan depicts the western portion of this property as being best suited for CI or commercial industrial development, and the eastern portion being best suited for low-density residential. The current zoning of the subject property is as recommended by the concept plan. At the Planning Commission review of this, we had numerous residents from the Park West subdivision who spoke in opposition to the rezoning. As I stated, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended denial of the rezoning request. The planning department concurred with this recommendation.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. A couple of points of order. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please step to the podium and state your name and address. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made pertaining to this item once the timer sounds. You'll need to wrap up your comments within 10 seconds. There will be no yielding of time to another person. And engaging in any kind of verbal attacks or anything like that will not be tolerated in the chambers. So if anyone would like to speak to that, you're welcome to come up and, like I said, identify yourself.
My name is Linda Owens. Address is 5424 Overton Road in Nashville, Tennessee, 37220. My family owns the property in question. RS-20 is appropriate for suburban neighborhoods. This parcel is beside, directly next to, and in-site distance of the I-40 Interstate and the new interchange off-ramp. It is also in-site distance of the new State Industrial Access Project on Bennett Road. This area feeds the new business park and industrial developments and will be a busy, high-traffic area. The reason provided by the Planning Commission was that this three acres had been designated as a buffer for an adjoining residential development. Mr. Mills said 2003. This buffer was not disclosed to us in May 2010 by the city or county or their attorney at our closing. A buffer between residential and commercial property is 30 feet, not three acres, and there are approximately six homes in this development that even back up to our property. Residential zoning would be zoning our three acres unusable. Also, the division of our six-acre parcel as three east acres, RS-20, and three west acres, CI, would now make it necessary for businesses to travel across the residential property to access the commercial property with the positioning of the new Minelet Creek Road. Therefore, this makes our three acres of commercial property inaccessible and unusable. This division of our parcel into two zones baffled appraiser Nelson Pratt, working for T.DOT, who questioned the rationale of this zoning when he appraised this property one year ago. He made inquiries with the Planning Commission and with Melinda Kiefer, Coordinator of Economic and Community Development, and he found no motives for the position of the current zoning, specifically the parcel zoned RS-20. Mr. Pratt concluded that since the majority of the property, 52%, is already zoned CI, it was a reasonable assumption that the portion of the property bearing residential zoning would change to that of the CI district, which increases its overall highest and best use. Therefore, the appraisers proceeded under the reasonable assumption that the portion of the property bearing residential zoning could, should, and will be rezoned CI. The city has spot-zoned this property. You've also spot-zoned property that you own in the business park, making it necessary for us to go through this rezoning process. I was here with my mother in December 2006 pleading with you to not take her land. Now, nine years later, with my son, we are asking that you not make our land that the Tennessee Supreme Court ruled on in 2010 inaccessible and unusable. I will be exploring with our attorney if your actions may be found in violation of the Tennessee Supreme Court's decision or our 2010 agreed order.
Thank you. Yes, sir. That'd be fine. Yes.
I'm Glenn Murphy. I am a resident of Park West Subdivision. The reasons the buffer zone was established are the same today as they were back then, even more so with the addition of the Interstate Interchange. Minelet Creek Road is going to be relocated, if I'm not mistaken, and the interchange, the off-ramps are going to be 1,200 feet from the center of the interchange. Is that correct, against stacking?
I'm not sure of the exact distance, but yes, it will be relocated north.
I think that's what I saw in the plans. Well, 1,200 feet is way on up here, so somewhere right in this area.
Sir, I have the picture if you want to see it.
Thank you.
This is the new mine that Creek proposed, okay? This is the new bridges, okay?
Okay, Minelet Creek, then. The road is going to start moving approximately this location.
Try not to touch it. It's supposed to be a smart board, but it's not too smart.
Roughly in this area right here, according to this photograph, the road will continue up this way. Well, we still need this buffer zone here, and as you put in your paper yesterday, the zoning does not comply with the city's land use plan. And we just request that the city continue this. This could probably be large enough for a few more residential lots also, if it's not as a buffer. I just wanted to reiterate our position that we would like to continue the land as it stays.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, let me clarify one thing. I think "buffer" has been used the wrong term here, and it's been interpreted correctly. It's not a buffer as required for adjoining uses of different uses as specified in the zoning code, which are, you know, those specifications are 30 or 20 or 10, depending on the use. This was set up as a buffer area of our transition area between an existing subdivision, an existing developed residential area. This property can be developed. It's specifically left at this width so that a street could be put in this, and it could be subdivided and additional single-family homes built there if the property owner wanted to do that.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Noel. I live at 2557 Park West Drive in Cookeville, of course. What I'm upset about is that there wasn't any consideration given to our development during this whole process. There wasn't any kind of noise apparatus installed, okay? There was apparatus installed a mile and a half north of us. Now, that's pretty far away from the interchange that's going to happen. The reason why the noise was, let's say, looked at that far away is because of the alternate A extension. The alternate B was going to be an extension, but because of wetlands and other items that couldn't be, so they did A, alternate A. Now, alternate A will involve noise on our part, okay? Because my house is a half-mile, little over a half-mile.
Maybe just one second. So we're not dealing, this is only pertaining to the rezoning of the property?
Yes, yes. Well, I'm getting to that.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure you knew we weren't talking about alternates.
Exactly. Now, my house is a half a mile from the bridge, from Bennett Road Bridge, okay? That piece of property is a buffer, a noise buffer for us, or for those six or seven homes that reside on that side of the new exchange. Now, my house, again, being 1,000 feet from the highway. Now, if you wanted to sleep at my house at night and hear the trucks go through your room, that's fine, but we don't. We would like to have that buffer maintained so that some noise is eliminated, okay? We'd like to have T.DOT come back in and do a study on our property to find out the DBs of noise involved in our area. And it's quite bad. If I can't sit on my back deck and talk to my wife without yelling over the noise from the highway, it's pretty sad. Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comment?
My name is Lila Angaro. I live at 2563 Park West Drive. One of our concerns about the commercial use of the property is a lot of people in the neighborhood are concerned about a possible truck stop being put in, in that area, and all the lights, all the noise, everything that goes along with it. And again, we're all concerned with the noise. We would like to keep that buffer area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Zane Owens. I live at 620 Oakley Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. To suggest that this buffer zone be used for further residential use would kind of contradict these neighbors' point that it would be loud and too close to potentially a hotel or other commercial institutions. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Decker, I live in Park West also.
What's your name, sir?
Jim Decker.
Thank you.
All I'm really looking for, I understand the need for industrial development, but we greatly appreciate a quiet place to live and just a little peace and quiet. We don't think that, well, we see a deterioration of the noise situation if further development takes place that close. I guess the suggestion that they can put houses there, if people really want to live with that, they can certainly build houses in that buffer zone. I don't think it's appropriate. I hardly think people who built their homes in Park West thought that they would have this type of development so close. But I understand that's going to happen. We would like to maintain this 200 or 300 feet if we could, per the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
We live at 2768 Park West. Our lot is actually the lot closest to Minelet Creek Road. My wife and I live there. We're really excited about all the growth and development in the area. I just kind of want to reiterate what all the other residents have said. You know, you've got the tree line there that helps with the noise. I don't think any of us want to, you know, let kids and grandkids play in the backyard with a truck stop a few feet away, or whatever it may be. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Keith Bass. I want to say hi to my old doctor first, Dr. Walmet. Hadn't seen him in a long time. But I live, me and my wife, we live in the second place here, 2762. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to say thank you to the city commissioners, the county commissioners, whoever puts that 200-foot buffer, that zone in there. I appreciate you protecting those residents in that area. It makes me feel very good. I don't understand, and it's not me, but I can't understand how that, and I'm not throwing those slurs to the people out of Nashville, but if they lived in that particular neighborhood, if they were my neighbors, I would want them to say, is this what I want, and I'm living right here? That's the only thing we're asking. But I thank each and every one of y'all for standing up for that 200-foot buffer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Anything else?
Can I respond?
Pardon me?
I just wanted to respond.
You may. One final comment. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to respond. I do, my grandmother did live in this area, and I spent a lot of time there, so I do know the noise of the interstate. And there will not be a truck stop there. I can guarantee you that, and not on any property that I own. Baxter has enough truck stops, and I don't think that Cookeville needs one, at least not here. What we would like to do is put a hotel there. And generally, hotels are quiet. I mean, that's the reason, they're not that heavily trafficked, and they're usually pretty quiet. But I think that would be the least, because, like I said, I am considering where you would want to be. Because this is his property, and this is my family, and we care about what happens to it. And we care about the neighborhood, and we always have. This land we fought dearly for is very precious to us, so we do not want it to be anything that would not make you proud.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. All right. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda Noel. I live at 2557 Park West Drive. And my big concern is if you look, if you were to drive through our neighborhood, which is great, and look at the population in our neighborhood, I would say 80 to 85% of people our age and older. So for us to decide, because of the changes, to move to another area of Cookeville, it would be extremely difficult. We just want this area preserved. We appreciate the buffer and all that you're doing to preserve it. To have a motel or a hotel there is going to be more lights in the area, more noise in the area, and it's going to greatly affect the quality of life that we are trying to preserve. And another thing that I would ask to be considered, if it goes to be commercial in that area, is about signs. I mean, to me, the biggest pollution that's happening in Cookeville lately is the billboards. And quite frankly, the way the development sits, we're hoping that you can just kind of consider us who live there before you make any other changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name's Zane Owens, and I don't think any of this would have been an issue if it had been disclosed that this land would, in the future, be a buffer zone. When they took property through eminent domain, the city could have used their part of the property to supply this buffer zone instead of tricking someone else into using their property and making their property worthless. I think that burden should have fell on the city if the city is providing that service to the neighbors.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Jim Johnson, representing 2732 down here, 2737. I also concur that we'd like to not rezon this property. We'd like somewhat the peace, but also, like, as one of them mentioned, you know, our kids run around this neighborhood. Lots of us go out and walk, and anything commercial is going to make it feel less safe. I also would like to say there's a large amount of trees along this property. So if there is a rezoning, I ask that a greenway or whatever it's called be kept so that none of the trees that help with noise buffering and beauty be taken down. A hotel actually would be one of my worst fears, because they're usually a high-rise. They're going to be looking literally into my front door or my mom's back door, and I really don't like that idea either. So I'm very opposed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comment? All right. This will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. The council will now consider this and vote on the business portion of the item. Is there a motion on this matter? All right. There being no motion on the matter, it will fail. All right. Seven B., Consider Resolution R-151217, authorizing the submittal of a Community Transportation Planning Grant application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the purpose of preparing a transportation plan for the City of Cookeville and committing the city to a local funding match. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, you've covered this pretty well. The funds we're seeking are not to exceed $250,000, and the match that we have to commit to is 10% or up to $25,000. The grant funds, if approved, would be used for a transportation systems management and operations project. Specifically, a plan would be developed that includes synchronization and optimization of traffic signals and traffic control devices, traffic flow analysis, and identification and prioritization of street and other transportation improvements to maximize traffic flow within the city. And the planning department requests your approval of this resolution.
Yes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion?
I think this is something that's going to be money well-spent, because the one thing I've noticed after living here for about 40 years is that traffic's getting worse, and we need to do everything we can to synchronize the lights to make traffic move better.
Yes, sir. This is well-needed for quite some time, and hopefully with that can also come the, as we talked about, potentially beyond the synchronization, is even some flow analysis and some things like that that go with it as well.
We're successful. Remember, this is a competitive grant, so it's not a guarantee that we'll get it.
Very good. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Seven C., Consider Approval to Acquire Property at 201 West Fifth Street from Cookeville Regional Medical, for the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. CEO Paul Korth.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Trustees and recommendation to purchase two pieces of property, one located on 201 West Fifth Street and 251 West Fifth Street. This is going to work, Mr. Mills. Yep, the site is on the map there. Those two properties, one of which has a medical office building, is about 3,800 square feet. The other has an old house that will probably later be destroyed. Both pieces of property have been appraised by a local appraiser, and appraised value and purchase price is $595,000. Medical Center would be using the one piece of property where the Medical Center, with the medical office building, for a continued medical office building. Medical Center does own all the property adjacent in that block there between Willow and Fifth Street and Sixth Street, and Whitney is all owned by the Medical Center right now. So be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I just have a comment. I mean, I live there, okay? This Christmas season, I've been living at the hospital, and I appreciate the hospital's foresight. And again, that's because as far as, like, traffic coming in and out and patients getting there, and actually, less confusion of people trying to find our hospital, it's going to greatly enhance that. So it gives the hospital opportunity to do that. So I appreciate what, Paul, what you and the board have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, this does fit within the master plan of the facility.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Just to make sure the property will be titled in the name of the city of Cookeville.
Correct.
Yes.
All right.
It would be correct. I'd also ask Mr. Raider to help us with finding and identifying who, who would do the clothes on the
Right, David, Mr. Webber usually does that for the city.
That's who we, that's who we would use.
Great. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7D, consider authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one on the water plant lagoon project. Mr. Kelly?
Mayor and council, I'm seeking authorization for the city manager to execute a change order number one on the water plant lagoon cleanout project. The original contract called for removal and estimated 800 dry tons of solids out of lagoon number three, and 700 tons out of lagoon number two. Since the contractor was already on site, we asked the contractor that they would honor their bid price per dry ton for the removal of additional 320 dry tons of solids out of lagoon number one, which is now more solids in it than we originally anticipated, since we had to take it out of service, put it in more service when we were taking solids out of the other two. They've agreed to hold their prices. We will need some additional days added to the contract. Original contract, $467,000. Increase the contract by $95,000, oh-two-seven, or oh-seven-two, and it'll add ninety days to the contract. The, these two little lagoons that we are currently working in, when you take them out, we had to push more over here, so while we've got them there, we think it's prudent for us to go ahead and do that. And would recommend your approval.
All right, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Anyone like to speak to the motion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7E, consider approval of, to purchase a noise barrier wall system for the Cookeville-Putnam County Animal Shelter. Mr. Davidson?
Mayor and council members, back in September, we had a group of neighbors, neighbors that joined the animal shelter property, that spoke to us at one of our council meetings, seeking help at the shelter, trying to reduce the noise from all the dogs that are barking. And we actually had, after that meeting, had the, luckily, we have Tennessee Tech in town, they're a great asset that we have, and reached out to Tech. They, they put us in contact with one of their mechanical engineering professors, who has a, who's, one of her areas of interest is noise abatement. She took some readings out there, and at the end of the, end of the process, suggested that we actually construct a wall to help reduce that noise level that's coming from the shelter. And what she actually suggested is basically any type of hard surface barrier, and so we've been, we began looking at different options that we could do. And what we've come up with is two different wall systems, and the reason we have two different, two different wall systems, and this is kind of a layout of the shelter. The, the one wall system is, would be a masonry system, that's kinda in the upper-left-hand corner of that diagram on the screen there, a masonry wall there. So basically, a seventy-foot wall in that kennel section area to help block that noise that travels that direction of the, toward the neighborhood, we'd build that, that wall in-house with city forces. The second system is a sound panel system. You can see it on the screen. It's on the southern end of the building. The struggle there, we're trying to build a masonry wall, is that's, just happens to be where all the septic system tanks are, and the pumps related to that. We don't have a lot of space in there to work. And so this sound barrier system is actually made locally. Didn't realize that until about two and a half weeks ago, three weeks, three weeks ago now, and that's made by Bennett Industries. This particular system would be a sole source purchased from them. Working with David Prowse at Bennett Industries, we've got that price down to $16,000 to construct that wall, but I would ask your approval to purchase that wall system from Bennett Industries, as well as to construct this masonry wall in-house with city forces. And we do have funding left over from the construction, some funds left over from the construction of the animal shelter that we can use toward, toward these walls.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
If it's appropriate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I'm very proud, I'm very proud of this new animal shelter. This has been, it's, it's probably one of the best animal shelters, I would say, in the state, largely due, or in part due to an organic movement with a lot of, a lot of very involved pet lovers and the city of Cookeville, and also the county. However, we, when we found out that this, that there was a noise issue back in September, I'm really, I'm very, again, I'm very, also very proud of the way our city administration has attacked, has attacked this problem and tried to figure out how to, how to be good neighbors to the folks that live very close by. And I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about voting for this masonry panel and the sound panel in order to help take care of this problem, but I just wanna make sure, and just let everybody know that we have really, it's, it's exciting that we've got a great, a great facility, but we also, I think we're, the city is trying to be very good neighbors to our folks. So just a comment I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I could add just one thing, I mean, I spent time, I've learned a lot about noise abatement the last couple of months. And one thing I'm, I'm hoping to do is, is to build this, you know, one time, get it right as best we can this time, and, and hopefully this will do this. I don't know, you know, we're gonna try to, one of the things that Dr. Darvin from Tech suggested is build the, whatever you build, the closer you can build it to the noise source, the better it will help. There is only so much decibels that you can cut down, but we're gonna build that as close to that noise source, the end of those kennel runs as we can. And my hope and my prayer is that this doesn't come with some other unintended consequences, but we don't know that until we construct this wall. So we will see what happens, and I'm hoping and praying that it is a, a good solution and resolution for these neighbors.
Now, our, our intent when we built this was to have the most outstanding animal shelter that we could build in Cookeville. A lot of people volunteered, property was donated, material and the money, but at the same time, we wanna be responsible neighbors and show respect for the people that live out there, so the consequences of possibly overcrowding of some animals out there, but we wanna be good neighbors and try to resolve this in your favor and to cut, if not all, a significant proportion of the sound that is being created by the animals out there. So thank for letting us know, and we're, we're trying to help you.
All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider approval to purchase a forensic workstation for ICAC Investigations Sole Source Provider, Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, just request you to purchase a EDAS Fox forensic computer workstation. This particular workstation is designed by this company. It is a proprietary system, specifically designed for ICAC investigations, internet crimes against children. The purchase is funded through an ICAC grant that is administered by the Office of Criminal Justice Programs. The cost of this workstation is $10,325, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Question or comment? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7G, consider awarding bid for One Radar Message Center. Chief Evans?
Mayor and council, just request to purchase a Radar trailer and message center. We did solicit bids. We received one bid from Stalker. Radar was the only bidder. Purchase is funded through the Governor's Highway Safety Office Grant. The cost of this trailer is $15,724. Recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any comment? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7H, consider awarding bid for Father Daughter Date Night 2016 Full Catered Meal. Rick Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We advertise and receive bids for full catered meal for our annual Father Daughter Date Night event, which is scheduled for February 19th, 20th, 26th, 27th of 2016. And we received two bids, and we are recommending for your approval of the low-bid meeting specifications, and that would be Royal Act catering. We would include the option of the chocolate fountain, because that may be more popular than the meal itself.
Well, we just absolutely will not, will not vote for this unless the chocolate fountain is included in this.
I would appreciate if our, if our leisure services director would retract option.
Yeah, it's not optional. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Let's have an eye. Consider awarding bid for uniforms. Mr. Kelly? Water Quality and Leisure Services Department.
Yes, Mayor and council, we did our annual bid combined with leisure services for uniforms, and we would recommend the low-bid or meeting specifications.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7J, consider resolution R. 151218 authorizing the acceptance of the heart of the city playground. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a great pleasure to be here before you this evening, and an honor to be here to inform you that the heart of the city playground is complete and ready for use. We have received a letter from Kelly Swallows and Ashley Swan, co-chairs of the Cookeville Community Playground Organization, who are here with us tonight. That letter states that the committee has completed construction of all elements and requests that the city take full ownership. The committee, led by Kelly and Ashley, along with hundreds of volunteers, sponsors, supporters, have done an amazing job realizing this dream for our city and for Dogwood Park. They have fulfilled all of the terms of the agreement between the city and the playground organization, and I wholeheartedly agree that they have lived up to their commitment and their promise, and I recommend that the city accept full ownership of the heart of the city playground at Dogwood Park. And with that intent, I present to you the following resolution for your consideration. Resolution number R. 15-12-18. Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the heart of the city playground. Whereas the city of Cookeville was approached by a community group of parents and concerned citizens in January of 2014, with interest in developing a safe, fully accessible playground for children in the downtown area, and whereas the city of Cookeville agreed to partner with Cookeville Community Playground, a nonprofit organization, by providing land within Dogwood Park to construct a community-built playground to provide an accessible, inclusive play area for the enjoyment of children, and whereas the city is pleased that the Cookeville Community Playground has met their obligation, as agreed, and has completed the playground as designed by Playgrounds by Leathers, has received a certificate of completion from Leathers, and has been certified as in full compliance with all requirements by the city of Cookeville. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Cookeville, City Council of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee hereby accepts the heart of the city playground and assumes exclusive and sole ownership of the playground, its fixtures, and all ancillary equipment, and assumes the sole responsibility for maintenance and future development and decisions regarding the playground. Cookeville Community Playground has no further ownership, obligation, duty, or control of the playground. Be it further resolved that the city of Cookeville hereby extends to the Cookeville Community Playground and the Heart of the City Playground Committee sincere gratitude and appreciation for their amazing efforts to coordinate, design, raise substantial funds, and complete a unique, accessible, and inclusive playground built by volunteers for the children of our community, that, that is and will continue to be a tremendous asset to Dogwood Park and to our city, adopted this 17th day of December 2015. I recommend your approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to note that Mr. Wood and the, and the committee have fulfilled all the duties with respect to the safety and meeting all the codes, so that it's, it's just in excellent condition, and so they fulfilled all of the obligations under our agreement with them completely.
Very good.
I've got some comments. This started with a Kids Kingdom that I know the vice mayor can remember from twenty years or so ago, next to the YMCA, and that was a wood structure that wasn't as prepared quite as well as this, and it didn't last as long, and I know that the vice mayor has been active and working on this for many, many years, and was the somewhat impetus, along with this community, to get this going, and I'd like to commend him and, and all the hundreds of people that worked on this.
I'd like to say when Kelly and Ashley came in and spoke to us last fall about their idea and proposal, I thought they were proposing Mission Impossible. Try to be realistic, but you've ladies proved that it's mission possible, and thank you for all the work that you've done. It's been amazing.
Just, I'd like to put in my two cents. Councilman Womack, thank you very much. You, you give me too much credit for the work that, the very hard work that's been done by this committee, Mrs. Swallows and Mrs. Swan. You guys have done, I was, I write notes when I hear this resolution and things like that, and I just, I wrote the word awe. I'm in awe of what you've done. Some of the best things that happen in this city and across this country and across the world is when, is when, is when people, is when people and government work together to get things done, and you guys have been able to do that, and I, I am in awe of that, because you raised just a little bit less than a half, than a half million dollars. Over a half million dollars? Okay, let me, I don't, all with exclamation points, okay? And, and that in and of itself speaks, speaks volumes to the, to the work that you and your committees have done. I know, I know you two are here, and you're taking credit for it, but I know there's a whole cadre, cadre of people that are, that deserve the credit. But I also wanna thank this community, and one of the reasons why I love Cookeville, and one of the reasons why I'm sitting here today, is because this city and this community does things like this. I am so proud of what, I'm so proud of what Cookeville, Putnam County, and the Upper Combiner Region does. We, we truly love each other, and it's, it's wonderful to see things like this happen, and I'll just shut up with that.
Thank you. I'll just echo fantastic job by, by both of y'all organizing, and all the people that went into this, the hundreds of volunteers, the money that was raised, the churches that stepped up and, and, you know, made some really big initial things that helped jumpstart some stuff, Life Church and others, and, and again, just the partnership between the council, the, the leisure services, and then looking at, you know, where best to place this, and then how that people, you know, came together in the rain, driving rainstorm, the worst possible weather you could have for literally seven days, and then it was pretty, and then they decided to have more time, and it rained all during that. So against all odds, it was done, and congratulations on your all's leadership for that, and we're excited to accept that, accept this into, as part of the, the city and an integral part. It's amazing. Now, you know, you look back several months ago, and when all that was dug up in Dogwood Park, it looked like a battle zone, and now it literally looks like that has been there the entire time that Dogwood Park has been there. You cannot tell the difference, and that, that's a testament to our, to our workforce, our public works, and our leisure services that, that got all that back together, surrounding it, and just, it just looks like it's always been there, so.
Thank you.
Kudos. Yeah, so we have a motion. We have a second. We've had great comments. We'll all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Very good. That can finalize the agenda portion of our meeting. We have a time at the end. If anyone would like to speak to the council for anything that's not related to the agenda, we, we welcome you to do that, if you would like to come up and speak to that. No, we wish all of you a Merry Christmas.
Have a comment.
And, oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at Mrs. Swallows and Mrs. Swan. I was asking them when we, when we can play, and they went like
It's all yours now.
Rick?
We got the key now.
I'm, I'm just wondering, 'cause there've been a lot of folks asking, when can we go out there?
Been a lot of folks out there anyway. It is our hope. We have, we're gonna put up some temporary barricades in case we have traffic issues. That protects the opening, the entrance area. We, we have bollards on order that will be permanent there, that will help protect the, the entry of the playground, any children that may be playing there, from traffic that may get away and come down the hill. That's in the process, but we're gonna put up some temporary barricades there to protect them, and if all goes well, we hope that we'll do a little bit of work and clean up tomorrow and put those barricades in place, and it is our hope that Saturday, two days from now, we'll remove the fencing and the signs that say, "Stay Out, Keep" and the signs that say "Stay Out, Keep Off," and allow people to play.
Good. Saturday, okay.
So you can play Saturday on there.
I can't wait. I worked on, I worked on one element over there. I worked on one element over there, and I am fired up about getting on it. I have another comment to make, too.
Go right ahead.
Actually, I have two comments to make. Sorry. Sorry, everybody. Sorry, we're trying to, everybody, but I want to commend, Rick, I want to commend Mr. Woods and his leisure services staff. They have, that, your staff has been working overtime during this Christmas season with the T double S double A, with Christmas in the park, with our, the heart of the city playground. I want to thank you very much and your staff, and I hope if any of your staff is here, and I extend my gratitude to that staff for doing so many things to make Cookeville a place, a place where we, where I want to live, okay? Where I want to live, and I thank you very much for that. And I also want to thank...
It's a great staff. They do great work. Thank you.
They do. Absolutely. I also want to thank Mr. Johns, Mr. Decker, Travis, Manley, Mr. Bass, the Knowles for being here over the Park West stuff. And I want to just make a comment to Ms. Owens. Thank you for, thank you all for your time here with this. And one of the lessons that we've learned that, from the heart of the city playground that I think can happen with residential and commercial development is when we all work together. A lot of times, we can find, we can find a very, a very common, a very common place that we all love to be, we all want to be, and call this place our home, okay? So I really hope, again, I voted, I voted for our residential dwellers, but we're going to have, Cookeville is growing, and we're growing very fast, and we're going to have this conflict between commercial and residential. And the better that our developers can work with our residential folks, the better we're going to be. I think, I think there's a, there is a very good common solution, and I hope you guys, well, I voted what I did, but I think this is going to be, we're going to continue to see this, and I don't think it's a problem. I think it's, I think it's a good problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Thank you. Would wish, you want to...
One, one last thing with the people here. I'd like to remind you that the park program with the Christmas tree and the sound program, which is every hour on the hour at five, six, seven, eight, and nine o'clock, so forty minutes from now, you can go over to the park and listen to the fifteen-minute program while you're down this way from Park West. So we appreciate y'all, and we hope that people go out and watch the light and sound program in the park.
Yes, and we've got Santa in the Park Saturday and Sunday and Monday, one to four, and three to six on Monday. We have ice skating, starts December 26th, ice skating and a snow tube slide for five days, December 26th through the 30th, so we'd certainly invite you to come to that. And on behalf of the council, we wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We'll be adjourned.